For the, this initial meeting, I'll just, like I do with the Charter Commission, until they name a president and vice president or chair, you know, I'll just kick things off. And the first meeting, that'll be up to the new chair or the new president to start the meeting. But, to get going, I just want to congratulate everybody once again on a historical election and welcome here to our new path ahead, our form of government. Just wanted to remind everybody again, July 1st is the day we're going to be sworn in. And again, as we had mentioned before, it may be a good logistic item to talk about later on in our discussion, you know, when to be sworn in. There was a lot of good ideas, you know, earlier that makes sense, you know, have the department heads there and I think that's a good thing to get more people there to see historical sworn in like this, I think that makes sense. So, but for right now, we just, you know, tonight is going to be a discussion item to discuss is the key, not to vote. There could be no decisions or no votes taken tonight. And I know there's a couple, I will just go by the agenda, there's some good items up, you know, on there that really will help, you know, the efficiency and get people going for the July 1st first meeting. So, I think it's a good idea we're all here tonight. And with that said, the first topic, the discussion with the representative from the Collins Center.
So she's actually probably going to be here in about 10 minutes.
Okay.
She was stuck in traffic on her way here, so we're going to have to defer that one for a few minutes till she gets here.
Okay.
Tom, I'd suggest, because we, rather than waste time, why don't we go to item number three, because we can probably
Sure.
Deal with that in the interim, in the 10-minute period?
Yeah.
If that's okay.
Great idea.
Want me to start, or?
Or, I want to do a couple of housekeeping things?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I think it's important that when we get going, everyone has their nameplates. That'll be good. I know Paul has one. You know, I don't, you kind of have.
You can take it and throw it away if you want.
But, yeah, I just want to make sure if everyone's name and middle initial that I have down from the, from the voting records. Is it first name, middle initial, last name, good for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, sure, that works.
Very good. So we'll get those going, we'll get that done, it'll be here in time for the meeting on the 1st. So that'll be good. You know, logistics of the meeting, you know, the, as far as, you know, this type of setup, you know, I think it's good to have a setup like this more than just a square table. And ultimately, the tables, I agree, we had in the selectmen's hearing room, was kind of like a semi-circle. And I think that probably even works a little better than this. I mean, this is fine, you know, it's how technical you want to get and, you know, but, you know, we could, you know, I know the office depot or office station, Riverdale Road has furniture for pretty cheap. And if we decide long-term, we're going to have all our meetings, you know, it's an option to have a permanent, you know, table and chairs for us.
I know, I thought Don had talked about maybe moving these meetings to the, where the school committee has their meetings, because it's already wired and the cameras are already in, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's an issue.
I think we need to talk about location, because he had mentioned that to me. And my only, I think that makes a lot of sense, with the exception of sometimes parking up there is a real problem when there's athletic events going on. And I think we have to make it part of our mission to make sure that our meetings are easily accessible by the people and the folks to show up without parking issues, without issues of kids, you know, running all around and things like that. So I agree, the high school, from the logistical standpoint of LCAT and leaving a meeting space set up, because the school committee would use it in the interim, makes sense, but it doesn't for the access of the residents. And I think we might have to be inconvenienced in order to make it more accessible to the residents. Now, I don't know with the renovations at the town hall, what's going to end up in terms of a meeting room. The existing meeting room up there, I think, is too small.
Too tight. There's not enough audience space.
No. Right now, from having conducted meetings in town for the last eight years, right now I think this is the best room that makes the most sense. Parking is plentiful, access is easy, it's handicap accessible, the bathrooms are handicap accessible, so from an open meeting standpoint, we don't have a legal issue there. We can fit quite a few folks in here for a public hearing or something along that line.
And we can even fit more out there.
We can go there.
Right, that's right. If it came to that, we could.
This room is technically wired for
Yes, I know, yes.
For Don.
Yes, I do.
It's just, they gotta pull the wires out.
Yeah.
He can, actually, it's pre-wired for him.
Yeah, there was, there was some logistics on, in terms of, I guess, some of his equipment and stuff like that, but, and although I would, I really do want to accommodate LCAT the best we can, that's not our priority, really. I mean, so.
We're also not likely to run into scheduling conflicts as much here, you know, competing with, we would have to work around, you know, the school committee if we were, so this does make sense.
Yeah, I will say, though, there are evenings, depending upon when we meet, that there's events or, you know, various classes going on out there from meeting with the appropriations committee. Sometimes we were competing with Zumba classes and things along that line, which is not a big deal, you close the door, you just don't want to, you know, we can post a sign on there, the door's open, come in, you know, so that we don't run into those open meeting issues.
We've had no problems in our meetings, because we just shut the door. And it sort of gives you a pace for the meeting if you follow the music.
Also, a good point brought up was that to have a place for people to come up and speak, you know, maybe, you know, every meeting have a microphone if somebody wants to come up or have a podium. It's almost their own personal space to come up and express their opinions and, you know, on a certain topics or jet.
You could even set
Yeah, you could even set up a little table right here with a chair and a microphone.
Yeah. I think a permanent position for the clerk, which will have to be in every meeting, and eventually the town manager will have to be at every meeting.
On either side, yeah.
You know, so a permanent position for them as well.
Yeah.
Well Carolyn would have an idea of what agendas planned down the road if there was a conflict for the use of this room on the same evening, right?
Yeah.
And we're going to feel for how many people are actually going to attend these meetings, probably four into it or so, unless we have some specific agenda. So we'll know how much space we actually need, but we might have to use both rooms from time to time. Try the high school if this room's booked.
I don't think this room's used much at night. I know they use it during the day, because we can't really do anything to it, because they use it for different, different purposes, so.
Well, she would know for sure, right? Yeah.
Now, since you brought that up, Mike, I've had a thought related to our meeting schedule, and I'll throw it out there for thought. The Charter requires that we meet at least monthly. Obviously, we know, particularly in the beginning, we're going to be meeting much more frequently than that. But, and I've had a thought that it would make our life a lot easier now and in the future, if we established a meeting night a month, so for example, the second Tuesday, just as an example. And that also, possibly down the road, that we set that second Tuesday as, that monthly meeting as the night that specific legislative business would be conducted. So if something needs to come to the council, it would come at the regular monthly meeting. That way, the other meetings that we set aside to conduct a specific business, we have the time to conduct that business and we don't get
That makes sense.
Buried into other things. Just a thought I had, that I thought I'd throw it out there for conversation.
That makes sense, because we've had specific meetings and all of a sudden have stuff piled up on it, you know, because we have a meeting scheduled, and it's just like, you can't, you're trying to do a specific thing, be it, you know, a police candidate or something, and then all of a sudden you've got all these other topics, so it does muddy the waters, if you will, so.
That way, too, also, the town, you know, the town manager, the department head, so on and so forth, they know if something has to come to the council, they got a deadline. This is when it's due, because it has to be at this meeting and those things, it just tends to work well for, so, got to throw it out there for thought. That would help the scheduling, Mike, so they know this, this
Right. And Carolyn knows what's going on in here, day in and day out, so.
Right.
I don't think it'll be a problem at all, so.
So without voting, what we'll do on the July 1st agenda will be to discuss the date and my thoughts, and that second Tuesday, I would suggest 6:00 would be a good start point, but again, that's something we can decide on July 1st, but I'm leaning toward that as well.
So does Tuesdays tend to work well for everyone?
Mm-hmm. You miss the holidays on Monday, it rolls over, you get stuffed, you know?
So, I know we can't make a decision, but it sounds like
Sounds like, it sounds like it'll be on our agenda for July 1st.
It does.
And this is good, this is perfect, this is why getting together like this, make that first meeting, you know, much quicker and get the items we need to get to, so.
Now, as far as the format of the meeting, I mean, obviously, we want to adopt, I think, you know, maybe some of the traditions that we've had in the Board of Selectmen as far as pledge of allegiance, tribute to our soldiers, both here and abroad. I mean, is there anything else we want to change, or would you want to? I mean, again, we're not voting, it's just for discussion, as far as format.
That open meeting law that you say who's taping the meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's required, yeah.
Right.
The only other thing I would add to that, I agree with you, by the way, I think that's, that kind of decorum is respectable, and I'd like to continue it. But, I think we should also add at the beginning of the meeting, after those formalities, after we announce who's taping it and all that kind of stuff, the legalities are out of the way with, because we are bound by the Charter to allow the residents an opportunity to be heard, doesn't mean it's a question-answer period or a debate period, but it, an opportunity to be heard, that we ought to set aside the first X number of minutes of every meeting, whatever that, we feel that should be, and do it right up front, and offer them the opportunity to be heard on, on whatever it is that they've come before us to be heard. And if we make that part of our regular, routine, monthly agenda, then hopefully the residents will get accustomed to that. And they know if they want to be heard, they can show up at the meeting and, and the first 10 minutes or whatever is set aside for that purpose.
In the interest of time and fairness to all concerned, we can certainly put rules in place, so, someone says, "Well, I want to be heard again, and I want to come back yet again," and so now, one person may end up taking most of the time, you know, with post-c questions. But again, these are things we can work out. I mean, the intent of the Charter and what the people voted is to give the people that opportunity, but at the same time, I think the people who attend, they want it to be a fair and balanced process.
Do you have to sign up like you do for the second?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I don't know, dude, I don't
48-hour notice of agenda, technically.
What's the, what's the
I don't know if I want to see a sign up.
Well, what's the process of being, let's speak to us.
Well, I, when it was added to the Charter, the thought process was, A, to develop a means of which the people could be heard, because many felt like they were losing that by losing town meeting.
Right.
So they, from, as it relates to the legislative business of the town, we wanted to ensure that the people had a voice to express their concerns or their desires, or whatever it may be, to the legislative body before a vote is taken on a specific issue. Or even it could be post-vote, if they're not happy with it, something along that line. So that was really the major thought process behind it. You know, I suppose we can, we can get, we're going to have to, early in our tenure, establish rules to operate by. I think that's probably a topic that'll come in during those rules, is, you know, how much time and that sort of thing, and whether they should have to sign up ahead of time or that sort of thing. I'm just, and I, you know what, how the rules go, I, you know, I'm open to that. My big thing is to make sure that we actually set the time aside and it's not something that gets forgotten and lost.
I mean, we, I, you're right, but you still have flexibility. So for instance, you know, we may have 6:00, maybe a pressing time for, say, our fire chief or police chief to come in, and if we've already blocked it out, I think we can have a speaker's list, whether they sign up the night of the meeting or in advance, they have that opportunity, and then find a way to incorporate them into the meeting. So we have people, like, situation where somebody's running a little late, we can now say, "Okay, so-and-so, would you like to address us?" And come in there. So they're on there, they're on the list, they will be addressed, every one of them, but not necessarily between 6:00 and 6:30. They're here for the meeting, they're going to listen, and maybe they might come at different other, at other times, you know, unless they have specific business ahead as opposed to the open forum. Again, this is a work in progress, there's some ideas.
My only thought on that, quite frankly, is that if they've come to speak in regards to a vote that we intend to take, it's on the agenda for us to take that night.
Yeah, then
And they're not allowed to speak prior to that vote being taken, that's not very
We could say, you know, Jane Smith regarding, you know, whatever, budget of this or so, and that's on the agenda, of course, they're going to be prioritized, that goes without saying. You know, I don't think, I don't know if the intention of the Charter was to say, somebody comes in and sort of, open line, you know, I mean
No. In fact, that's why the line is in there in the Charter, that we may establish rules as such.
Exactly, yeah.
So that it's not, it's not an open-mic night.
Yeah, so if there's something pertinent, clearly that individual will get, have a time to speak either at, or if it's a public hearing, certainly during the public hearing. You know, so I mean, depending on what the event is, I mean, what's the agenda for that evening?
Well, the reason why they sign up now 48 hours ahead of time, so it can be posted on the agenda for the open meeting law, that somebody else, that they come in, they sign up, they tell you what they're going to talk about, it's posted right now on our agenda for the selectmen's office. So when they come in on that Tuesday to speak or whatever that meeting is, they're part of the agenda items. So, part of the open meeting is getting a know what people are going to discuss, so are we going to, like, are we bound to follow that? I would assume it's the same regulations.
But would that preclude, I'm sorry, would that preclude someone who hasn't signed up from being able to speak that night?
It doesn't, and the selectmen's meetings, it does.
Okay.
I think the objective here is to give them the opportunity to voice their concerns and to, you know, express themselves to us, but we do have to have some parameters around it, so that we can keep, you know, we can keep to the agenda, keep the meetings to a reasonable time.
We don't have a filibuster running going in the morning or something.
Tom, if you want to follow the open meeting law, which that requires it on the agenda, then we need to put it on the agenda. If they want to speak and they're that passionate about it, they'll sign up 48 hours ahead of time, as long as they know ahead of time, that's the process.
I think that might be a learning curve for the public, though, to realize that, you know, there's a process to sign up versus coming and then wanting, you know, waiting patiently.
I think there's some misinformation here, though, on the open meeting law. Tom, step in if I'm wrong, but my understanding of it, if it's a topic that the council is going to discuss, it needs to be posted. But if you're allowing residents to come in and express their opinion, that doesn't mean we're discussing it. And in fact, that's not what this intent was. This intent was not a discussion forum.
That's what I'm looking for clarity on.
Yeah.
Because right now, everybody that comes in, regardless of whether we're going to discuss it or not, like, we didn't discuss anything with Dick Turnberg.
Right.
He came in, but he's on the agenda, he signs up 48 hours in advance. Now, in John Dracy's different, we discussed his issue, but both of them signed up 48 hours in advance.
He actually signed up as part of the meeting as opposed to in the open forum, so what, at one point, because what we do, well, I had an issue with hearing to it, but I finally did, but what we do is, we would have five minutes, and you get to express your, whatever you want to talk about.
Yeah.
We take it under advisement, we're not going to give any answers that night.
And that was the intent of this.
Right.
It wasn't to open discussion of the council. So like, somebody can't come in and change our agenda.
No, I know, but the point was, even those people that came in and sat down and said their piece, and we listened, they still were on the agenda and signed up 40 hours in advance.
Right, I understand that. What I'm saying is the open meeting law doesn't require that.
That's good.
If the council plans to address or even make a decision based upon something someone brings forward that night, it needs to be posted, okay?
So if you're going to vote, somebody wants to come up and talk about it, they got to go down 48 hours ahead of time to sign up, but somebody that just wants to come talk about whatever, doesn't have to.
No, if somebody brings forward an issue that we feel needs to be addressed by the council, we set aside the time for the next, the next agenda.
If you have an agenda, it's going to be this budget, whatever, issue. Somebody wants to talk about it, that's got to be on the agenda. But somebody that doesn't want to talk about the budget piece that we're not going to discuss or vote on that night, doesn't have to be on the agenda. So it should be one or the other, because how are you going to differentiate between, "I just want to get up and talk to you guys about something that you're not going to discuss tonight," but then this person wants to get up and talk about something that they, that we are going to discuss tonight? It's just easier to have one standard practice, to have them do it.
The posting has nothing to do with what they discuss. The posting has to do with what we discuss. If our intent is not to discuss any particular item or make any particular decisions on it
Just to be heard.
Then they're just being heard. That doesn't affect, we need to post it if we're going to discuss it. If we're just going to hear their concerns, that doesn't need to be posted, it can be simply posted as
But if it's their concerns or something we're discussing, shouldn't they be on the agenda?
Yes, if we're going to discuss
Right, so you split hairs by saying, "Do it for this one and don't do it for this one." Instead, just do it for everybody.
Just as a consideration, if you look at how the school committee posts their agenda, there's a piece in there that says, "Opportunity for visitors to address the committee." And underneath, there's some verbiage that says, "The chair of the committee is allowing a visitor to approach the mic and express a concern." But there is no intention, there's no, there should be no expectation that a discussion will follow, but it's just an opportunity to be heard. And not that you have to copy that verbiage, but it, it's, it works pretty well.
But you can't assure that we're not going to discuss what they talk about.
No, we can't. If it's not posted, we can, yes, you can, Kevin, you just, you simply don't discuss it. You say, "Look, this individual brought up something that should come to this council for consideration, we should put that on"
And what if it's already something that's on our agenda here? That's my point.
Well, that's different. It's concurrent.
And it's already posted.
So it doesn't matter, as long as it's posted, because we're
Yes, because that's a topic that we're already up. But if somebody brings forward something
No, I follow you.
Most cases, we're going to say, "Thank you," or, you know, "For your concern."
Right.
If somebody brings something up that's new to us, that we think needs to be discussed, we need to put it on the next agenda, as something that we're going to discuss.
And it's at the discretion of the chair, at that point.
Right, the council president.
The council president, yes.
Quick question, so if we have a few people that are, you know, specifically on the agenda, and they take all the allotted time, but someone just came in and wants to voice an opinion or concern, I mean, are we setting a reasonable time limit at the beginning of the meeting, so that, you know, we're not an hour, two hours in, and we haven't yet addressed any of our agenda issues? So what is the reasonable amount of time that we're allotting?
I think time will help to pick that. I think if we come up with something in the beginning, I don't know, 15 minutes?
15 would be a starting place.
And if we find
But no matter what, there's an open opportunity each night.
Correct, it's built right into the agenda.
But even if there are a few people that have clearly signed up ahead of time, there'll be, there'll be some, there'll be some opportunity for someone who just comes in that day and wants to voice
Okay, I think that makes sense. My opinion, yes.
Hopefully, their concern would be the same if there's numerous people. If we had, let's just say we had three people, for example, we could say, "Guys, we've got 15 minutes here allocated for you, you each have five minutes to speak, we'll take it under advisement and we'll continue."
Right, sure enough. But I can see if it's a topic that, if they're allowed to talk about anything they want regarding their, you know, concerns about the town, and I hate to bring this up as a hot-button item, but say, for example, there's going to be a high school, and people are either pro or con, I can, if they want to just come, if they have the opportunity to just come in and talk about whether they want a high school or don't want a high school, I could picture 100 people at that door coming in, coming to sit and talk.
Wouldn't you then create a hearing or a forum for that?
I would think they'd create a forum for that.
Okay, but if it was a case where, okay, you hear the news that there's going to be potential for a new high school, and nothing's been done yet, and people just show up here because they want to get their voice heard, then I could see them, I could see them coming in in droves to, before the, before the hearings.
I think if there's going to be that potential on a high school or any big issue, we should do due diligence and create the public hearing to circumvent that problem.
In terms of that meeting that night, Paul, I think it's up to council president, should be his or her responsibility to say, "Okay, look, we've allotted this much time, we're going to cut it off there, we understand there's a tremendous amount of concern, you know, we'll address the issue of perhaps a public hearing, something like that, but close it and move on with the agenda."
One of the beauties is the fact that, you know, town councils exist throughout Massachusetts, so this might be a segue to our guest speaker, is to, is to find out how do other towns deal with it. Now, again, take it under, you know, take it under advisement.
Sure.
Because to see, you know, because, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, that's an awesome thing.
And I didn't bring up, of course, to make all those decisions today, I was just
No, I didn't, that has to be
The forum and set agenda items, that was one I wanted to make sure got included, that's all.
Well said, well said.
I was going to bring up the detailed part of the open meeting laws that talks about, you know, people talking at the mic, and you have to post it 24 hours if you have an, you know, I'll look into that, and, I mean, I think that's important to know upfront. So, but there is specific languages in the open meeting law that does talk to a town council type of government in who is allowed and who's not allowed.
I suspect you're going to find that if residents just allowed the opportunity to speak, that doesn't need to be, I mean, resident time can be posted, but not a specific topic. If there's an expectation, or if the council's going to address it, it needs to be a posted item.
That's correct. That's, that's how I understand, but I'll, I'll get copies of that, and I can, I'll distribute it, just to make this discussion easier, easier to understand going forward.
I think our guest is here.
Would you like to, uh?
Tell me where you want. Do I stand, do I sit?
You know what, let me get you a table, and it would be more comfortable for you.
I don't really need to.
You sure you don't want a table to?
You want to come join us up here? We'll make a slide of chair.
I'll just see your, see her, I want to see only her eyes.
But you look like you're in a senate hearing.
I didn't do it, I used my email.
You look like Michael Corleone in The Godfather.
I'm Mary.
Kathy Hill, nice to meet you, Mary.
Hi, how are you?
Don.
Hi.
Hi, Mary.
Mary, nice to see you.
How are you?
Hi.
Joe Ford.
Hi.
Hi, Mike Kane.
How are you?
Tom, good to see you.
Great seeing you. Good to meet you, all right?
Yes, we have, yeah.
We need some for all the media hype.
Okay. Well, that's convenient, thank you.
No problem.
So Eric, you could say we tabled that motion?
We did.
You're all weak people. The deal's good. Make sure you tip your waiters and waiters. That's right.
That's kind of graduate school for me at UMass, so yes, tip your waiters and waiters this week. You're welcome. All right, you tell me, where do you want me to start? What do you want me to say? Tell you a little bit about the Collins Center, about meeting, kind of the process with Town Manager search?
Yeah, I'd love a little overview.
Over view, and then you can ask questions?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, so, for those of you who don't know, the Collins Center for Public Management is a center within the McCormick School of Government at UMass Boston. It was created in 2008 with the sole mission of helping cities and towns and some state governments work better, work more efficiently. We are, you know, a fee-for-service, not a profit-making organization, and everybody who works there has a public sector background. Mine is particularly in public sector HR. We have data analysts, we have our, my colleague, Richard Kobayashi, he's a planner, he's been[1578.91] a recruiter, Steve McGoldrick, the director, was the receiver in Chelsea, so we're all municipal, you know, piece. And because clearly you all ran for this office and you must have a screw loose because you're going to do it for free for a small sudden. So, congratulations on your victories and on your new former government. Personally, I think it's fabulous. I have been spoiled in my career that I've only worked for manager council forms of government. I was fortunate to be with the first town manager of Barnstable when they changed their former government. I was there as the assistant personnel director for three years in the town of Barnstable. They had, I should ask how you all got elected, by district, by population, they had eleven counselors, crazy formula of at-large and precinct, and that was great fun. And then I left there to be the HR director for the town of Watertown outside of Cambridge with a town manager, nine-member council. So I have this affinity to that former government. I happen to be an elected town meeting member in the town of Shrewsbury where I live because I do that for fun as well as the work. And so, whole career has been in HR. I was able to quit my wonderful job in the town of Watertown to be home with my children. So when my youngest, who was twelve, went to school full-time, I joined the Collins Center and have been doing this work. I tell my husband it's part-time, but it really feels like full-time. And so I help out with the recruitment and I also lead the HR practice for pay and classifications, for trainings, for HR audits. Been done a lot of work in this area, been in Long Meadow, been in Ludlow, been in Chicagoe, Holyoke, as I mentioned, I'm a UMass Amherst, love coming out this way, and both undergraduate and graduate school. So that's me. In terms of what I would like to do, if you permit me, is, I'll pass this up later so you're not distracted. What we think is the best way to do a recruitment, we have, I have a list here, we've done like fifty of them since the, bless you.
Bless you.
Since the Collins Center was formed. We have done town managers, we have done CFOs, we have done, I forget what they called it in Springfield when it was the receiver finance person, we had done that search. We have done WRTA, executive directors, so we really have a great process. And the reason we have a great process, and whether you end up using us or somebody else, you know, you should learn the process. We believe that in order to attract good candidates, which this job will, it'll be very exciting for somebody, there aren't that many town manager positions in the area, and it's an attractive form of government, it's always somebody's goal to be a town manager and work with a council and, you know, have that, that experience. So you will have no trouble recruiting people for this job. It's a wonderful community and to be the first town manager would be very exciting for somebody. But it's also, as exciting it will be for somebody, it's that much more important that you get it right, you know, it is a, so I'm guessing there may have been some politics in town.
That's about the biggest understatement you've ever made.
You're a good yes sir.
Yes.
How did I know?
We've gotten them wrong, so we got to get it right this time.
We know, we all know how we not want to do it.
Say that out loud.
And, so you want to get it right. So certainly, tried and true, and most consulting firms will, will do this the same way. I'll actually take these and pass them around. These are sample profiles, well, actually they're real profiles, but a sample for you from the town manager search in the town of Ashburn, if we did. And what we recommend is that you spend the time upfront to really define the position, define the role and what the setting is and what the backdrop is. Because you really want to go for quality and interest, not volume. People always say, oh, what if I'm boston.com, you'll get a hundred resumes, but who cares? You want, you know.
Quality.
Fifteen to twenty people who really know what the job is, who are really interested in the job. So when people, people are like, well, we didn't get that many, but then we have to realize that we work with a screening committee and it's difficult to decide how many to bring in for an interview because they're, they're all good candidates. We're currently doing the town of Stonem for a town administrator and we got a total of twenty-three who are all excellent. So twelve of them were interviewed, and that's a high number of qualified people to, to bring in. So your screening committee, which we recommend highly, is sometimes isn't issued with boards and committees because they all want to get their hands on it and be on the, on the search committee. We strongly recommend that you create a screening committee. We, we like five or seven, so it's a nice odd number. If one or two, you know, you can't have more than a quorum on there. Want to be members of that, we typically say, have somebody from your appropriations committee, somebody from a planning board, you know, you decide who you want on your screening committee. Sometimes, and again, I don't know the small p politics, bring a school committee member in or a chair, because schools are so important in towns and having that understanding and relationship is important as you move through bringing somebody in. So you know best who your committee should be. And the reason you want to do a committee is to maintain the confidence and confidentiality of your candidates. By having a screening committee, who we make them swear on whatever they swear on, that they won't share the names, you'll, you'll attract better candidates if they're not in trouble with their boss for applying to a job. So the screening committee allows you to do that all in executive session. And then only the finalists put forward to the full town council, names become public. And those interviews obviously have to be in the public. So by using a screening committee, you kind of have that once-removed process for people. And it really works well. What we do is we create this profile, we do all the advertising, the resumes come to us. That is very helpful.
That's very good.
Whether it's us or somebody else, quite frankly, to not be collecting. You'd be shocked to know some people are cynical about bad jobs or people in town getting, you know, getting selected for an interview. It really is nice to be that one step removed on that screening phase. Nobody can make the decision for you and you don't want anybody to make the decision for you. But it is helpful to have a, a group like that put forth a slate of finalists. Now, what we do.
Can I just get a quick question then? So in, in that initial screening process, you're taking, you know, gathering candidates.
Hundreds of resumes, yes.
Hundreds of resumes, and you're starting to whittle them down to then make recommendations based on the person's skillset. Are you, when you send that first round of people over, are you doing any screening background checking?
Excellent question. What we do is we make sure that the screening committees see every resume that comes in. So there's no question that, oh, my resume wasn't seen or, however, we will say whether people meet the qualifications you have identified. What happens is if we, we have found, really learning over these eight years, that committees have always, we've done it where we've said, here are the twelve that meet your criteria. There's always somebody on the committee who says, well, I heard Jane Smith applied, why isn't she in there? Then we're pulling out Jane Smith's resume to justify why not. So we have found that we, we now show all the resumes to the screening committee, yet still give that recommendation. Because you're not hiring us to substitute our judgment for, you know, for the committee, but to help facilitate. Often, we know some of the candidates, the municipal world is small, and so we have some insight. We also know, just from everybody who works there has been in cities and towns before, we know candidates. There's plenty of perfectly fabulous candidates that I could say would be a great town administrator, but not a great manager. That, that helps that screening committee, you know, to, to hear that. So what we do for the screening committee, I'm not going to share this with you only because it's, it's real resumes, we create for the screening committee this packet, I hope nobody has really good vision, of all the resumes, so.
You're safe.
This was, oh, this is Barnstable, that's town, town of Barnstable. And what we also do is create a table that corresponds with this, with a summary. So this is really helpful for the screening committees to kind of sift through the resumes and see a table that can help them analyze the candidates. So what typically happens is we have a screening committee, we meet them to say, here is your charge, we will ask you, the town council, to actually vote a charge for them. Because we want them, using the lenses that they wear to review your profile, which we will ask you to vote on, saying, this is what we're looking for. We highly recommend, sometimes this is, I'm going to put it on the table, we recommend you do not require a master's degree, but prefer a master's degree. Sometimes chills the pool, if somebody's two months away from having a master's degree, they can't be considered. So we, we, we just went through that, actually, in a town that begins with a C and ends with an M, and, and they were, you know, rightly so, they used their judgment, they said we want a master's degree, ended up re-advertising that, dropping a master's degree, getting a better pool, and actually hired somebody with a master's degree. But it just sends a message. The other thing that we highly recommend is that you just don't say pay depending on qualifications. People really want to have a ballpark. Because you're going to get people who expect way more than you're willing to pay and then you'll be, you know, you can always pay less than the range that you've advertised, but it does.
Well, do you, do you help us set the median average? Do you, based on this geography?
We provide you, yes, absolutely.
Some guidance around that?
Exactly.
I mean, I know we, I have access to Sherman information, you know, but if you have real data, you know, on candidates in this geographical territory and you know what that median average is, and then we can make a determination based on, you know, we'll be, we'll be able to plan ahead, set, set our budget parameters and then determine based on the person's, you know, level of experience and education, you know, where they're going to fall within that range.
Exactly. I forget what we said in Mashpee, I probably should have given you one that had salary on the last page.
It's here. One twenty to one fifty.
Right, so one twenty to one fifty, that, you know, you could go anywhere within that. But we have had some that have said, depending on qualifications, but they really meant, and it was a poor central mass town, they really meant no more than eighty. Well, that, we were hamstrung because that attracts a different level of qualifications and experience. So we do crack the bend and we will, we will work with you, we will work with you on that. And what we do is we help you standardize your questions for the interviews, we schedule everything for you, we, so we come to the interviews, we do not participate in the interviews, that's up to you all, the screening committee, and we help you consensus voting, cream rises to the top. We have, only once did I ever have a, a committee actually vote who they wanted to include for interviews. It was, it was a tough one. Most times, the consensus comes together. And so it's a really organic but very great process because you have people either from your committees, your boards, we recommend no employees sit on the committee, only because you'll be hiring your boss. It just doesn't, you know, some towns say, oh, we want our finance director on there. Well, I don't, do you have a finance committee or appropriations or whatever the name is in under the government?
Well, we do, but that's disappearing July one as it changes.
Right, but there may be somebody who's on that that you, as a council, would say, oh, that person would have good insight. Maybe there's a planning board person or a, I, whether you've done a, a vision statement for the town as part of this, as part of the government study committee, something like that, you think about, and we can help you with ideas, ideas for that.
Also, based on your experience, is it commonplace to require people to relocate to the town? Is that something that you see often?
Great question. We've seen it once or twice and it's totally your call. Is it a requirement as a negotiated issue with a contract or is it in your charter?
Well, the charter is open-ended.
Excellent.
The wording is, the wording is that they have to move into town within a given amount of time once they're chosen. However, the council does have the authority to waive that requirement.
Oh, that puts you in a nice spot.
You can thank Mike for that.
Michael Ward did that too.
Michael Ward did that to us. Or Tanya, one of the two of them, I think it was Michael.
Don't, don't you be kidding.
Actually, that was, that was, and I'm not blaming Mike, it was actually a, a topic of great debate in the charter commission.
I'm sure it was a compromise.
Yep, it was.
Yes, you did not sell us all the evidence.
Yep.
And I just think that, you know, how we structure a job description, you know, there are people that live in this geographical area and we're not, we're not offering them guaranteed employment. I mean, we're not. And we're not offering to pay for their relocation costs. So somebody who lives relatively close by, I mean, I'm in Boston all the time, if they asked me to relocate, I wouldn't. I live here, this is where I, I want to live. So, so I'm just curious to kind of get your opinion.
You absolutely need to decide that so it's in this profile.
Right.
It's unfair to surprise anybody. You know, so if it is true, though, see, the waiving piece is, is problematic because it's either true or it's not true. They have to move here or they don't have to move here. So we would debate that with you at the time. I guess the question would be, and where I could see some, what if somebody lives in Springfield and has, there's probably some.
You're repeating the entire debate that took place in the charter commission.
It's probably closer mileage, you know, so maybe that's the case where you would waive it. But I think we could word it in a way that says, you know, required, we would talk to candidates about that as well, because what is realistic? Because what you don't mean to do is waive it for somebody who lives in Carver, you know.
Yeah, it may happen organically.
You're waiving it because they're in Springfield.
Right, they may have to, if they're going to relocate to this area, then the assumption would be why not to this community that you're going to work in.
Exactly.
And live in, and, and that is great, it may happen organically, but that was my issue, is that somebody who lives one town over, two towns over, or within thirty-minute ride is, is going to find that as a deterrent and maybe that great candidate chooses not to apply. So, so I'm just asking.
I think we'd just be honest, if maybe we just quote the charter.
I, I, I'm thinking we do, I'm thinking we quote the charter.
We put it there for a reason.
And if we're in that, at that point with a candidate, then it becomes a.
And if you are so in luck with that candidate, you will exercise that provision. But I do think quoting the charter is fair.
Before you get off the screening committee, I do have a couple of questions for you. I love the idea of a screening committee, I've actually sat on one that, I thought it worked very well. What is the maximum number of people on a screening committee that you think you can put on there and it still works fairly well? You said five to seven in the beginning, is seven really a max?
We like seven, realistically, the nightmare one where I had to vote, remember I said that? That was eleven, scheduling was terrible.
The more, the bigger.
You have got to bring, and nobody can miss an interview because that's not a fair process. So think about that. I would like to say seven, if it needed to be nine, but that, it still means if you're doing ten interviews, that's four different days.
Right.
Or two long days or three long days, that all nine people have to be available. Now, obviously, we've had situations where somebody got sick and they missed those interviews, they did not get to participate in deciding on a particular candidate. So I think the logistics takes over when it gets that big, but obviously, this is a new, fresh situation and you all may come up, when you're deliberating about this down the line, you may say, eh, you know, seven's a little too thin, or five's too thin and eleven is too, too, too rich. We say an odd number only because if there ever had to be a vote.
The call's vote, right.
But we've never, you know, we've never really had a problem with that.
So my second question, I agree with a lot of the, the folks that should be on it that you said, folks that either currently work within town government or have a history of working within town government, I, I get that, but I have an interest also in involving residents of the town.
Absolutely.
What is the number on that and how have you seen that work in the past?
Well, I'm trying to think. In two specific searches, they had, they just put it out to people, resident member of the committee, you know, people applied, and they chose them. One was, she was a mother in the school, another one was a businessman. Now, you may choose to have somebody, I, I don't know if there's a chamber or a rotary or, you know, off in the business, which is so important and an integral part of the vitality of the community, somebody like that is also very strong, you know, to have on there. So I've already gotten you tonight, having a.
Yeah, you have, yeah, yeah.
Don't tell Richard, he'll be mad at me.
Great, but you've answered the question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in that case, but I would strongly suggest that you remind people who express an interest in being on the committee that they have to make. Now, there's not that many, there's a forming meeting, there's a reviewing of the resume meeting, there's interview meetings, and we always decide on the last night of the interviews who are moving forward. So it's a total of five or six meetings, so it's not huge, but I'm going to assume you're going to, the screening committee will interview about eight, nine people, you know, sometimes we, and it depends on their availability. If people can't get here till six, you can really only do two evening, you know, we like to do a Friday, and people take a Friday afternoon off, a Friday evening, a Saturday. We do do interviews on Sundays, if, you know, that does work with people, but some places don't want to do many times Sundays. So just keep that in mind, the logistics of, of what it looks like. I am a bit of a scheduling freak in that once people get, once people get assigned, we do like a Google Calendar and we just line it up and say, here you go. Because you, and obviously, if somebody misses, they miss, you know, but they just, they're not an effective member of the committee if they're missing more, more than one, you know, and particularly the deciding who you're going to include for an interview. That needing to review the resumes is, is critical. If you, you know, if you came to a soccer game and you made two of the three interviews one night, that's not going to break it.
In your experience, once you begin this process from that first step, what is the average timetable? Are we talking?
About ten months, no, I'm sorry, I can't help myself.
Who else we have?
Just me, just me. Theoretically, say you advertise September first, you give to the end of September to apply, we like to say three to four weeks. And we don't like to say give six weeks, they either apply the first week or they apply the last day at eleven o'clock because they're not sure, so, but I wouldn't advertise over the summer. I would wait till September. We could prepare the profile and get that going over the summer and into September. So assume September one advertisement, September twenty-eighth deadline, October seventh, resumes to the screening committee, October tenth, meeting with the screening committee to decide on who to interview, October, the weeks of October seventeenth and twenty-four to do the interview. October, the weeks of October 17th and 24th to do the interviews. Say at the end, on Halloween, you have four finalists. It takes us seven to 10 days to do the backgrounds for you. So, by Veterans Day, you have your fully vetted candidates ready to put before you. Now, that becomes December 15 if we don't get the profile done and the advertisement is October. But that's...
So, our, our six-month timeline is pretty realistic.
Oh, Mary, yes. You would totally be within that. The time delay is creating that profile, but that's the most critical piece.
So, the next question is, and you'll probably get to this at some point, but we have to fill an interim spot in between.
Yes.
So, I know just from speaking to Rich and everybody there, there's a process for that as well.
Yes. What we don't do is we don't place people, but what we would do is reach out to people that we know who do this work. So, you would then, we would tell them to submit a resume to, you know, ASAP. And there's some great people around who are retired and will do, you know, a few days a week and that will help you, you know, hit the ground running.
And those candidates, just so everybody knows, they're already vetted by you and have already done it.
Oh, yes, yes. And they're, most of them are retired county administrators, absolutely.
Whether it were a guy that was mayor and he, he didn't work out, so, but those always, but those always get them qualified.
Really, you have to bring that up. Thought we were moving forward.
Yes.
One question regarding the, the screening committee and one, obviously, when you're, when you're talking about, and as you're, you're going to either tell me yes or no.
Sure.
You were talking about evenings and weekends, and I'm guessing one of the things we can impart to the screening committee, potential screening committee people is that's probably because people we're interviewing have current jobs and they would rather come here in their own time to be interviewed as opposed to, you know, when you're talking about Saturday interviews, I assume it's somebody if they're working Monday through Friday for another town, they're not going to say, "I have to leave this afternoon because I'm," you know.
No, it's actually because of the screening committee availability.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no. If your, if your screening committee can meet during the day on Thursday and Friday, candidates will take the day off.
Oh, okay.
They don't, they will adapt to your, it's who's on, you know, do you work in Boston? What time can you get back to town? What, you know, when is this fall available? Oh, no. Candidates, I'm sure use personal time and never call and sit. You know, but they'll, they will come.
Okay.
Yeah, if they're interested, they'll come during the day. We have some, we've done them at 7:00 a.m., you know, because screening committees, you know, commute so they can do one or two in the morning and then go. So, it really is, the scheduling is up to the screening committee. And we make ourselves, you know, on most days, kind of countries where there's not too much, as long as it's all right. So...
Could you touch upon, for the comfort of everyone having gone through this before, the, I guess, the special legislation that enables the Collins Center to be contracted with the town without us going out to bid without us?
Thank you.
Not in violation of 30B regulations?
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. UMass-Washington is a governmental agency, as is the town. As you know, the town purchased goods from estate purchasing bid list without going out to bid. We are, because we're a public entity and considered part of the same government for that purpose, we're exempt from 30B because it's an intergovernmental agreement. So, it's a, it's a service agreement between, between two governments. Not unlike if you shared an animal control officer with another town. You don't need to bid that. It's the same, it's the same principle.
So, essentially, we enter, it constitutes a contract nonetheless, but we essentially enter into an inter municipal, intergovernmental agreement with the Collins Center to enable them to do this if the council decides to do so?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's how it works. So, it say, it does save you that time, you know. So, we hope you do. I would be thrilled to work with you all and love the form of government. I actually, my first consultant job after the kids went to school and before I worked with the Collins Center was when the town of Rain Tree changed their form of government, but they went with a mayor. And I was hired by the mayor to set up my charter, which they did not have.
Nor do we.
Yeah. Well, that would be another project. And I still like town manager better, but while the mayor of Rain Tree is fabulous, you never know. You never know. So, that's why I am so happy for you as individuals and as a community. Any other questions? I don't want to tie you.
One more before I ruin Chris. If the council so feels that this is something that they might be interested in moving on, would it be possible to get a, two quotes from the Collins Center by next Friday, by July 1? The first quote to help us through the process of finding an interim? And the second quote to help us through the process, as you've outlined, for a town manager?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I could get you that for July 2.
July 1.
First.
Friday, July 1.
Okay, Friday, July 1.
Let me explain myself.
I do.
Under, under the charter, on July 1 is our first meeting. We have to set some wheels in motion by the charter. So, we don't have a whole lot of choice in setting some wheels in motion. It's, we're not exactly sure what those wheels are going to be yet. That's what we're working on.
Sure. Be happy to do that for you. There is no quote to help you find an interim. We would just send that out to people we know.
Okay.
So, that's, that's just our public service, you know.
Nice.
And, no, so there's no, and we don't do the recruitment for you and say, "Oh, are you interested to talk to this one?" What I would want to know is who do they send their resume to?
Okay.
And that's what, what I would like to know.
And typically, how many candidates would that draw?
We'd get about four.
Okay. So, a reasonable number to look at.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and again, because you're a little regionally challenged, but because...
Those of us that live in Western Mass don't.
It's South. I know.
That's called West of 495, yeah.
It's funny, I live in Shrewsbury and half of UMass thinks, you know, I'm out in the woods. I'm like, you guys have no idea. But if you're willing to have somebody be three days a week, which is typical because they can't work full-time, many of them.
And collect a retirement.
They're state recipients, yeah.
But you would have time to build in some hours before January if they haven't already worked. So, again, those are nuances we let you all decide.
960 dollars.
960?
Can you tell where I retired from?
So, we could actually, you know, if you tell me who they should be in touch with, we can start that reel because you want to move quickly on that interim.
Yeah, that's going to be, Mary, that's like, what are businesses to get the interim, like on the, around that July 1, try and get those candidates anyway.
This is a public meeting.
Right, yes.
So, people could be watching this and they would know about that already and have them there for July 1.
Perfect.
Would you be able to send that, make a recommendation to send that information to our clerk?
Hold on.
Just a, the list of names of which you, for the interim?
I, I will check because sometimes people don't, let me see, because sometimes we handle that more like if you're interested, send in a resume, rather than me say, you know, Mayor Sullivan, Mayor Marco, Mayor, you know, whatever, rather than list names, because they may not want their names to be listed. But if in fact we hear from people, I would let you know, you know, who, who we heard from that would be interested.
Okay. We'd certainly only want to hear, we'd only want to hear from candidates that would be interested.
Right, right. Just who I send it to isn't, isn't helpful.
Right, no, we don't, we wouldn't need that.
Yeah. So, we could, we could move on that in early, you know, right away.
Okay, good.
Whether you hire us or not, we would do that. You know. Any other questions? I think I covered everything.
Just basically, I just want for everybody to know, like, can you just sort of compare, like, your price-wise where you are because you're a government agency as opposed to like...
Oh, our standard recruitment, I will happily tell you, you can look at almost every, all of these, it's about $14,000. And that's fairly standard. There's a few consultants out there who would be a little less expensive, but they don't do the work that we do. There's clearly some that are more expensive. They do the work that we do. What they may do, which we don't do as, as a rule, is facilitate this body's or the soon-to-be-this-body's interviews. We'll give you advice, but once you get the finalist, it really should be up to you. We don't negotiate contracts. Some vendors do that. If that's what you need, we can do it, but we really feel that relationship has to be formed with, with you and your representatives. I'm sure whether you have town council involved or something like that. So, we don't have can, one thing we don't do that some others may do that we don't find useful, but it's not wrong, it's just different, is have candidates do a writing sample. You never know who's writing it.
Kind of experience of that. So, just as a, just as a point of reference, because, you know, I've had quite a bit of experience with headhunting firms and placement firms and, you know, they're generally taking up to 30% of the negotiated final salary. So, you know, that, that could be between, you know, 35 and 50,000 dollars based on the parameters of this job. So, it is a reasonable fee, certainly that, you know, so it is a flat fee, irregardless.
We are flat 14,000. Now, the, the only area that may cause that to go up, I believe, warrants full, because we have to interview all 11 counselors, that was a few thousand dollars more, maybe 18. But because we would want to interview each and every counselor to create that profile, and we do that individually for a reason, you know. Yes, and you as a body will vote on that profile, so as a collective you, you decide. But we really feel that those interviews to create the profile, we meet with key department heads and we have a group meeting for department heads to give us input, but that's before you finalize the profile. While we want to hear from people, it's your job to fill. And, you know, you are, the board is, is the client, so we feel strongly about that. So, that's, we get no permission, which, as I said, UMass is nonprofit making. You know, my salary gets covered, our expenses get covered out of that, you know. One place that would cost you more money than that price is the background checks. That's about $350 per candidate, per finalist. So, if you have 10 finalists going to the council, that's going to be $3,500. If you have four, you know, that's $1,400. So, that's a variable.
And at some point, if, you know, we do proceed with your organization, can you just, you know, let us know what that background check entails and who you're sending it to, what, what agency background checking is.
Sure, sure. We have a firm, right. We have a firm that we use that checks education, criminal, we do personal references and work references. But they have, they're tapped into the education system to verify degrees, you know, bank credit checks, criminal checks nationwide.
No, it sounds great. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. That was very helpful.
And if you think of any questions, just let me know. Shoot me an email.
Okay.
And again, congratulations. I'm so excited for you.
Just a side, side question. Does the center have, because one of the matters where, that we have to put together are the rules. Do you have sample council rules from other communities that could be, we can get that over there?
Sure. I mean, not on this topic, but on your previous topic, when I was in Watertown for, you know, almost nine years. It was public forum. Nobody had to be on the agenda, but they really, it was just to say, you know, my potholes are really bad on, you know, Main Street and it'd be like, okay, we'll let the DPW director know. So, there was that. It was always at the end, so they had the tired public waiting, though. So, I like the idea of having it be upfront, but we can get, sure, we can get you some sample. No need to, you want to customize them to you, you know, I mean, but there's no need in recreating the rules.
Sure.
You know, so I'll be happy to do, I'll call Michael Ward for that.
Thank you.
And you really only need a few because there aren't that many.
Something to build off of.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that.
Set attorney boilerplate thing, I don't like it. Especially with a flat fee. I like that more.
Palmer elected not to engage in your services.
Palmer, you know, we're not doing Palmer. Did they hire somebody or are they doing a search now?
I just wondered if you had, if, if you might have received any calls or they asked for your assistance or did anyone even inquire into your services from Palmer?
Off the top of my head, it sounds familiar, but do they not go in a firm? I'd have to check with Richard on that, you know. He's the one who typically puts the proposals together. We kind of break up the...
He served you up quick, though, when I talked to him.
He did. He lives in Belmont. He doesn't know where Worcester is. Are you kidding? You know, never mind, you know.
He couldn't wait to put your name out there. Oh, she'll be there.
Well, he knows I've done a lot of the work out here. I did the self-handling search. I've done, you know, plenty of work out here, so, and I, I love every excuse to come back, so. Great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, I'm really happy to. Have a great evening. Good luck on your new adventure.
Thank you.
Hope your drive back's a lot smoother.
Oh, it'll be, it was fine, what's getting from my house to the Mass Pike took me like 40 minutes just cutting across Worcester. It breezed up here, you know, so...
290?
No, I foolishly went over to Route 20 to get there, you know. I know.
290.
Usually 290 is the perpetual construction site, so...
I know, it's a risk. I'm halfway, I'm between the two, you know. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if, I'll just add that the experience, in my opinion, that the Charter Commission had was, with the Collins Center, was exceptional. They were fantastic in terms of taking the concerns of each and every member of the council and, or commission, rather, and melding that into a solution or a resolution. Now, we might read some of it and go, now, how did they, why did they come up with that? And in many instances, it was because everyone had legitimate concerns and we found a way to, to, to deal with it. And the experience that they brought at writing the charters was, was phenomenal. The data you asked about, the data that they had at their, at their disposal was, was fantastic to help us determine things. So, my experience has been, not just as the Charter Commission member, but my prior work career with them was, was phenomenal. They're a good company.
And they, just to touch, I'd add too, is as soon as I was in touch with them, saying like, this is kind of like what we're looking for, you know, how can you help us? Started with an interim conversation originally, and then it was like, I'll be there. It was less than a week and she was here with all this information and, I mean, and their back and forth on email. She like even checked the town's agenda to make sure she was listed on it for tonight and emailed me to say, "I'm not on the agenda. Do you still want me to come?" So, we, I mean, she was, they're on top of it, I guess not.
It sounds like a great option. And I know there's a need for speed, so what, what is our alternatives? I mean, you know...
Our alternatives would be to draft a set of specifications or a RFP, what's called an RFP, a request for proposal, and go out through following the 30B regulations. To do that, we're probably looking at anywhere, rushing it along a four to six-week process just to decide on a firm, just to get the, the bids back, if you will. Then we have to review them all and make a decision on which firm we'd, we'd want to go with. There's pros and cons to doing the bid process and pros and cons to doing an RFP. You'd have to go through which process you'd want to go, you think would work best for this council.
So, you know, and, and that certainly doesn't seem very attractive at all. And I'm sure it'll take all of four to six weeks to do. So, can we set an agenda item for July 1 to decide whether or not we're going to move forward with, you know, with the Collins Center? Is that...
I think that's reasonable.
I think that's very reasonable. Yeah. Sounds like a great option.
There's a list of references right there.
Yep. Even though they might have a tough time finding Western Mass, there, there are a few, you know, Western Mass things on here.
That's what the 14 grants for.
13 is for travel.
No, there's, there's quite a few here and, and there's a, a good, solid handful that were for town managers, so...
The reason I brought Palmer up is I didn't want to see their name on this. I mean, I think they're on their third town manager and they would have, you know, in hindsight, would have been much better off engaging in these services and probably getting it right the first time. So, that's where my eyes went. Is Palmer on here? No, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we all understand the importance. She said it. We've all said it. We've talked about it and, and, you know, to people during, you know, the time where we were campaigning, how important it is to get it right. We don't want this to be a stepping stone for someone who's looking for a job title, who's going to stay here for a year and then go somewhere else because they can make 10 or 12... or twenty thousand dollars more. So, it's appropriate to find the median average of pay in this geographical area and then make sure, you know.
That it's competitive.
Yeah, make sure we're competitive and maybe then some, because we're hiring one. We're not hiring fifty of this job. So, you know, it is critical, and then you have to make it a good working environment for these people. They have to come here, and we're going to empower them to do a job, and it's a great place to work, we just have to make that a good environment for them, and I think that's part of what our responsibilities are supposed to be, so.
And if they have, you know, the person has great grant writing skills, that can clearly help, oh, choking, that can clearly help offset the cost.
Correct.
Just in case.
One of the things I liked about it was the process removes it from-
I like that very much.
The recruitment process itself is removed from our hands. From a transparency standpoint, I like that.
They're the clearinghouse.
Yeah.
Agreed. Yep. Not that I know anyone who's qualified, but, you know.
No, no, but I think it helps the public's perception, too.
Anybody really knows. Yeah, absolutely.
That it's squeaky clean.
Yeah, because we owe that to them. I mean, after, you know, we don't talk about the past, but we owe that to them.
Yeah.
And the screening committee and the confidentiality. So, when they, they'll handle all that.
Yeah, and I think it's fair to put some parameters together, whoever's on that committee, you know, whoever that might be, whether the residents or, you know, other people that we choose to have from other boards, to understand that there is a protocol, that these are people's livelihoods, that, you know, that we haven't made them, intended them an offer that they've chosen to accept, so there is, you know, you know, some standards there, so they're not posting things on social media or anything that's not appropriate, because that could get us in a lot of trouble.
Eric, can you remind us, relative to the work the appropriations did on the budget that we just passed, was there a line item put in there so that we have?
There was not a specific line item. What was done was we boosted, I believe I'm doing this from memory now, by either twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars, the reserve fund. Reserve fund is a fund of money that is appropriated every year and can be, then it would, under bylaw, would require the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee. And it was really for unanticipated, unexpected expenses. Knowing that-
This was somewhat of an anticipated expense.
But yet, when we had to formulate the budget, you had not yet gone to a vote.
Right.
So, we were playing that juggling act. We did boost the reserve fund by some fifty, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars, so there's about a quarter million dollars in there, two hundred and fifty thousand right now.
Plus, we have the money aside for town administrator's salary, too.
But that wouldn't be needed for the salary.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right.
But in terms of the process, under the council rules or under the new form of government, it would simply require a vote of the council to appropriate the money from that reserve fund to a specific purpose, whatever that purpose might be. So, we did boost it a little bit. I would say also that available to the council are things like free cash and, you know, stabilization fund. Stabilization fund would require a two-thirds vote of the council to appropriate it. All those aspects are available to the council, whether we'd want to use them or not is another debate, but they are available to the council. But we did that for the reserve fund, for that very specific reason, to give us some money to work with.
Sorry, a quick question. So, you're saying the reserve fund can be paid to, you know, pay the Collins Center their fee, but, and then to your point, so we have a salary allocated for, you know, that is currently allocated, it's currently budgeted, correct?
Yes.
So, if the town manager's salary ranges of being higher, what do we do in the interim?
We could, what we would probably do in the first year, by the time that's all decided, it would be too late to raise and appropriate. The tax rate opened set. So, what we would have to do is appropriate it probably from free cash to the, free cash is money that's left over from prior fiscal years. It's a savings account, essentially. We would have to vote to transfer the money from free cash into, well, we'd actually would have to establish a town manager account, because right now there's the Board of Selectmen account that is, after July one, they don't exist any longer. So, we'd have to kind of redo that whole thing. But in other words, we would just move it from here to there. We couldn't raise and appropriate, it'd be too late fiscal year.
Okay. Just curious. Yep, thank you.
The money that is there for the town manager now, or town administrator now, I think would be right in line with the appropriation that was made to utilize that money for an interim. So, I don't think we would have, it would require any action of this council to utilize that money for an interim.
Thank you.
And once these applicants are narrowed down, too, we might be able to do the background checks in-house rather than spending additional funds. We have the capability of doing that right through our own police department.
Well.
Not necessarily educational background, but things like that.
Not the education, I mean, if you're talking the criminal side, and I don't know where the, what was she talking, three hundred and fifty dollars a person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, based on the final candidate, so if we have, if we have three or four people, yeah, if we have three or four people in the final pool, unreasonable, and then there's a, you know, there's some kind of guarantees that come with using those services in the past, so that they provide a certain set of standards that are followed, protocol based, you know, where'd you get your master's, where'd you get your undergraduate, their checking references, and anything else that might be involved. Whatever the purview is of whatever background they're buying for three hundred dollars is fairly reasonable, and we may not have that many final candidates, really depends. So, you know, that, I mean, that is a good option, but I think that, I don't know.
I didn't mean complete.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be two staged. They might not be doing what's called Corey checks or Sieges checks, this company, and we do have that luxury of-
I did say the criminal, they're checking the background.
They might only be doing Corey and not Sieges, and that's-
Right.
There's a significant difference in that. But there's also a tremendous amount of legality involved in terms of whether we as a community, as a municipality, on a prospective employee, have the right to check Sieges, and I think we'll find that we don't.
What's Sieges for those of us in the-
Criminal justice.
Investigation system.
So, there's limitations, and I know this from hiring firefighters, there's limitations in terms of what we can legally check and what we can't.
Well, I just know we have the capability, and he's lying about it, we're able to do both of those checks if they're required, so.
I think Paul raised a really good point, too, by, for the short money of three hundred and fifty dollars, to have an outside agency do it and remove that right into act, I think it's certainly worth. But we can discuss that in the time comes.
As long as they're capable of doing them, right?
Yep.
I think having the Collins Center stamp as prospective recruits come in, I think that's a, that certainly adds a part, you know, street cred, if you will, to them coming in here as opposed to some towns doing it on their own. I mean, as you guys pointed out, this is a pretty darn good list that we have of communities throughout this Commonwealth that have used their services.
That's fair.
So, if anybody wants to, by July one, we're going to have to make a decision. If in the meantime, you want to reach out to anybody in that community and find out how, what their experiences were, it might make you feel more comfortable.
You may know somebody along with them, I wonder.
I know one or two folks, yeah. I was, I was part of that process, which is what I was alluding to, and, again, it was a very positive process using them there.
Were you part of both processes for both their town managers?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, I was not for the current town manager. I was for the first town manager, who was Robin Prosser.
Yeah, was, I mean, was that, was that through the Collins Center?
It was.
Okay.
But they had no problem with you being a town employee at the time?
Actually, I was on, no, I was on the screening committee, and they went against advice, and we had myself as the fire chief, the police chief, I think that might have been it, on the screening committee. They also had a much larger screening committee. I don't remember the exact number, but in my mind, I'm remembering probably between twelve and fifteen people.
That's right.
She's absolutely right.
That's a scheduling.
Scheduling was a nightmare. We did manage to get it done, but scheduling was an absolute nightmare. And I, the other thing that I remember about that experience is, of course, we had to have a large room to accommodate that many people. And when the candidates came in, and we're talking seasoned candidates, folks that had been working in the field for a number of years, and the first thing out of their mouth always, when they walked in and saw that many people, was wow. And that, it kind of set a bad tone that didn't, didn't play well. So, although I'm very interested in a lot of the stakeholders being a part of that screening process, I do think it's probably worth limiting it to the numbers that she recommended, just because of the experience I've had on the other end.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't seem necessary, really, to have more than seven would seem to be-
We could, I think she kind of indicated we could stretch it to nine and probably still be okay, but if you start getting over that, you're really looking at, you know.
Yeah. I think if it gets unwieldy, then we're opening ourselves to more criticism as well.
Yeah.
The size of the-
Absolutely. Yeah, good point.
Yep. All right, shall we move to the next?
Yep.
So, then, well, I guess, let's go to item number two, the establishment of council procedures. When I forwarded this to Tom, I did so after kind of a quick review of the charter, obviously knowing these were in there at some point, but I looked for the exact wording and whatnot. And we're fairly bound to, if we're going to follow the charter, which obviously I think all of us intend to, we're fairly bound to taking some of these actions on July one, which is obviously why we're all here tonight, so that we have the opportunity to have some discussion in that regard before having to make the decision on July one. So, the first item on there is the election of a president and vice president of the council. I don't know what process you guys want to use. As far as I'm concerned, everybody who's might be interested in those positions ought to just make it known tonight, and whether you have conversations with them or give it some thought or whatnot between now and Friday, so that when you cast your vote for a council president, you feel confident in the person that you're casting the vote for. I don't, and somebody has a better way of doing it, by all means, speak up.
It sounds like-
Well, I'll start. I'm interested in council president, if anybody is so inclined. I don't know who else might be.
I would actually be interested in vice. And just not to, not to make your head big, but I think because you were part of this process and you've got a very good knowledge of it, I would tend to agree that you'd be a good candidate for president.
Thank you.
So, you have one vote?
Well, two if it's you, wouldn't you?
Well, it's true, too. Well, I don't know if you're going to vote for yourself.
Is anybody else?
Yeah, I'm interested in it.
In council president?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd be interested in vice.
Okay. Any others?
I'm interested in working with you guys.
Yep.
Okay, good. So, you folks all by now know how to get in touch with me, if you care to contact me between now and next Friday, and-
We'll see each other tomorrow, too.
Have any discussions?
That's right.
We will, that's right, at the Appropriations Committee meeting.
It is a posted meeting, so we can-
It is. But I welcome the calls, and I welcome the opportunity to speak with any of you if you saw desire between now and next Friday, and I'm sure you feel the same way.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's not like we're strangers.
No. Next would be the appointment of an interim town manager. I think we've just talked about that. So, I think I've said this to some of you, I did have a thought process on this. Obviously, there's going to be some lag between July first and we can actually get an interim town manager through the door to actually sit down at the desk and start doing some work. So, the way I see it, and if somebody else sees it, please chime up, but the way I see it, we can do one of two things. We could take a current town employee, one of our highly skilled and talented department heads perhaps, and appoint them as an acting town manager with the simple instructions of do no harm. That's what we're looking to occur, is do no harm, to work with the council as we move forward. I'm guessing a thirty day period, maybe, that it would take to get an interim in.
I think that's reasonable.
The other option is keep going the way we are now without that leadership in the town hall, and I think that would be a mistake.
Well, if I could add to that, I'm having a senior moment. Bob, I DFW director.
Eric.
Yeah, thank you. He had offered, when we lost, unfortunately, lost Mr. Neffinger, he had offered to come in and act as, you know, as need be as a town manager. And I know he's, he's obviously, he's highly skilled in his position, and I think he would be, you know, one of the choices. And there's probably others, but he offered to do it. And along those lines, as you may or may not know, because I know we're talking about needs, and I know we need a town manager, we're losing our building inspector, I believe June thirtieth, we're losing Lorraine in the selectmen's office. What we voted on at our last selectmen's meeting was, and with the blessing of Tom, was Marge LaRocque from the, from his office is going to step in and learn, for the time being, learn Lorraine's job until we can fill it permanently, maybe with Marge, because she's interested in it. But she's going to come in and take over and actually help that office, because Pauline's out for an extended period of time, I guess, and that office is, you know, has been reduced in size and capability, so to get, so to just lose Lorraine and not have, like your suggestion of having someone come in, we've got nobody, because Lorraine's been basically doing the job of the town administrator since April thirteenth. So, and she's done a fine job, but she's leaving, so, you know.
And in that office is just Lorraine and Pauline?
And Lori.
Lori.
Yeah. So, you know, we're going to, we're saddled with two things. We don't have an interim town manager, we're losing Lorraine, and it's going to be like, you know, you're going to need somebody to, you know, to keep the theoretical ball rolling. So, that's why Marge is going to actually help out in that regard. So, just to let you know that, we have temporary coverage for that, too, so.
Lorraine works also on licensing, right? You know, working on some of that, so.
We do, I have a question about something you said, but, you know, to your point, we need to set up some succession planning so that we don't paralyze the town every time there's turnover, you know. That's for another day. But, so, if we appoint a department head and we're saying, don't do any harm, what authority are we giving them in this interim? What can they do? What can they not do?
Actually, the charter actually outlines that fairly clearly, that they can't hire, they can't fire, they can't start new initiatives without the consent of the council. They can with the consent of the council. So, for example, let's say we have a critical position that needs to be filled. The individual, under normal circumstances, a normal town manager under the charter does the hiring of the individuals. The acting town manager does not have that authority, so that they, what they would have to do is bring it forward to the council and say, we have this critical position open, I have this very qualified candidate, here's the qualifications, here's why I would like to hire them, I'd like the blessings, if you will, of the council, and we can yea or nay it. It's another step that the acting has to go through. Normally, the council wouldn't be given that.
So, the acting has to go through that, the interim does not have to go through that, and clearly, the permanent does not have to go through that.
Correct.
So, all right, so that's fine.
Well, the interim would be up to us when we hire the individual.
Okay.
Because the charter doesn't recognize an interim. The charter recognizes an acting town manager and a town manager.
A permanent one, okay, that's good clarification.
But we could adopt similar guidelines for the interim.
Absolutely. So, can I, can I give you a what-if scenario, then? So, like, the, and I may have the title wrong, the library was doing a search for, I believe it was a director.
Yes, director.
So, they found someone in their search who's been put on hold for months.
Yep.
So, who in this next few weeks is going to make a decision to, is that going to be us, where we're going to make a decision?
Quickly get an acting, and then we would approve it, the acting. So, we'd have to get an acting manager stat, and that could be, again, somebody, has to So we'd have to get an acting manager stat, and that could be, again, somebody, has to be somebody working at the town at the moment. And then we, but they can't make a hiring decision without our approval. Am I reading it right?
You are reading it correct.
Yeah.
So they come here, they would present to us, here's our final candidate, this is our recommendation. We would put it to vote, and then so, and then they would be able to proceed with tendering an offer. Okay. Makes sense, because I know they've been on hold for a while there.
I know, Art saw me yesterday and he was lobbying.
He's been.
Rightly so, rightly so. But I said, we have no authority.
And they're fortunate that whomever they have in mind is willing to wait.
Yeah.
So I'd like to go back to what Paul said. When I was given this some thought ahead of time, just based on my interactions with the department heads, although there's a lot of very talented, very skilled department heads, but two came to mind. One was Bob Parent. I do believe that he holds the skills and would work very well with the council at moving us forward in that direction.
And it sounds as though he's expressed that.
He's very willing, yeah.
Willingness.
The other, quite frankly, I thought was our town accountant, Sarah Menard, who I think is a fantastic manager and a very bright young woman. I did approach her and ask her, and although she was very flattered that I did, she currently just had her second child. She's just returning from maternity leave. She's suffering some babysitter issues. She felt like she would be making a commitment to the council that she wouldn't be able to uphold. And of course, the individuals are gonna have to do this job and their other job for a period of time, so.
Well, that's fair and honorable of her to say that upfront.
So unless somebody else has some other people in mind. I know we can't make decisions, but I would ask.
Put it on the agenda for Friday.
Yeah, put it on the agenda for Friday, and I would ask Paul, are you willing to, Paul, Jim, and see?
Be happy to.
Okay.
Did say potentially, could be six months before.
Well, no, I think.
I think that was the interim.
Yeah, I think this, I don't know, I'm coming up with 30 days.
I would think 30 is reasonable.
The acting would probably be 30 days, interim probably.
Up to the first of the year, yeah.
Yeah, because I believe she said for the interim, she said we might get like four candidates. I believe she said four resumes.
Right.
So that's not gonna be a huge, you know, unless none of the four qualify, then that's not gonna be a huge process to vet them and.
Right. They're already vetted.
That's true too.
Four to come are vetted already.
Yeah, good point, because they're all retired.
It's pretty much an interview process for fit.
Right.
I would think 30 days is reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would point out, by the way, since it came up, the charter is specific also on the length of time that we can hire an interim or an acting. They call it an acting, my mistake. So it says no more than a four-month period with one four-month period renewal. So in other words, they give us eight months.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable, but it does give us a timeline that we have to make sure we work within.
Right.
So.
January 1, right? Could be a real.
Well, January 1, six months. So actually.
She said you start September.
Summer, she said it's a bad time.
Yeah, her conversation, it sounded like we could have everything in place and done.
September 1, I think should be our start date.
By January. Pardon?
December.
She said December.
You start September 1st.
She said December 15th, I think, would be to have some.
Right, not stretch it to January.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing that is probably.
People might be away or something. I talked about, she was saying not to market candidates in the summer.
We wouldn't be ready.
You know, it starts around September.
Right.
Because maybe she finds that, you know, people may not be.
We'll just put that together.
To me, this is, this is what we have to.
Yes.
Yeah, this is.
Well, they, it sounds like they formulated, though, after speaking to us individually and as a group. And I like that process.
I do, too.
Yeah.
I do, too.
Perfect.
Just need a cool beach. I think we got one here in town. You get gale warnings, you know, small craft advisories on the weather channel.
Jack Puff, Jack Puff was our harbor manager when I was my first.
That's right.
I'm in regards to Marge, will we be able to take her out of that office during voting, our voting period?
I did mention that, you know, to Kevin and Paul that, you know, she's a critical person to have there. And to basically have her available for September 8th and November 8th is.
Oh, yes, we can work around that.
Is very important, because from after November 8th, the next election isn't in total mix with June. So you have, you have seven months to get a new person out there.
Yeah.
But between now and November 8th, there's a visible election, it's a national election, and to lose her expertise.
No, we, obviously, obviously, we're gonna, you're being kind enough to do this, we're gonna work with you. I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I mean, that was, I think that was understanding from the beginning. Your job is gotta get done. Right, I mean, we're getting used to it, she's gonna have to.
We have new early voting procedures this year, so there's gonna be a lot more to it in addition to all the other absentee ballot and all the, you know, just the nooks and crannies that you're gonna be really tight on during the national election. So it'd be good to have her there, so it'll be good.
The next item is the establishment of interim rules. Don, I know you were doing some work in that area.
I was like, Wes Springfield called me up again today, seeing how we're going, and I said, we're having our first unofficial posted meeting, because they have, I was talking to our town council, Jim Donahue, and he was involved with the drafting of their council rules. And he said they're pretty good, so I shared them with everybody, but I also wanted, since it was a great opportunity, to talk to the Collins Center and see what they can bring to the table as well. So that's pretty much where we are at this point. And I think, I think we'll probably have a set of rules very soon. I'm gonna be, if you don't mind, you don't mind me following up with Mary and talking to her about those prototypes she was talking about, and see if we can merge it too and bring it up to discussion.
Actually, our only requirement on July 1 is that we come up with interim rules. In other words, some guidelines for us to follow. But would you be willing to, based on your research, throw together something for us to consider on July 1st?
Sure, I mean, they're fairly comprehensive, so we have to really.
You can dummy them down if you want. It's interim that we're looking for.
All right.
You know, in fact, dummying down works well for us, right?
Yeah, it works for me.
No, I meant, you know, we don't have to get into.
Yeah, no, you know, just.
All the, you know, the nuances that, I know, I've looked at some online, and you're right, some of them get pretty in-depth. I don't know that we have to get, for interim rules, that in-depth on some of those things.
Some of it you're gonna have to work through anyway, to figure out what really works. And some of that apply to Wes Springfield might not really.
Some of the things that we need to do on an interim rule basis is, as I said, not reinvent the, you know, first of all, is adopt Robert's Rules of Order, because that's what we've been using. Set an agenda together, maybe some protocol. How do we refer each other? Do we say through the chair? Do we use that word, or through the president, or what? What's the terminology? And that, I need help from you guys, you know, as a collective to see what's the decorum we would like to do. And that I don't have answers for.
So if you, if you come up with a, you know, is it reasonable to expect you come up with like a model that's like three pages in length as an interim starting point?
Right, I mean, yeah, probably.
And then we could have that, it would give us a starting point for our discussions. We could answer those questions on July 1st, and then maybe if we're all satisfied as interim rules to establish them as our interim rules.
Yeah, I.
If you're not comfortable.
Not for July 1st, not for 12, not for 12 noon, I think maybe that July 5th meeting. We probably at least discuss and maybe have a prototype together and not adopt it somewhat then, but at least have a chance to review it unofficially, discuss it. But hey, you know, who knows, maybe it'll happen. Maybe we can get it together that quickly.
Are we meeting on the first?
With me, I'll have a question as I read.
Where did the meeting on the 5th come from?
I thought that was one of our, I saw that in one of the emails.
Tom reserved it, just in case we weren't going to meet on the 1st. I think that was the option.
Oh, I thought, oh, I was taking that as a fait accompli, or it was gonna happen.
No, that was just.
Oh, okay.
I know we have to meet on the 1st, but in case emergency it was available, I just booked it.
All right, okay, no, I thought, I thought that was pretty much, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have this first meeting, and then we're gonna have, you know, this evening working meeting on the 5th, and I was prepared for that.
So do we want to move toward the Tuesday evening that we discussed after, after the 1st?
Yeah, yeah, I would.
And I mean, it doesn't have to be the first Tuesday, whatever, whatever we agree on.
I'd say Tuesdays work. Tuesdays seem to work, those second Tuesdays is the official one, but Tuesday seems to be a good time. I don't know, you know, what it competes with over here, I know Monday they have some adult, you know, programs.
But that really doesn't affect this room.
We've been.
Just in case we have an overflow, like, you know, a lot of people showing up, then we have to move there.
So maybe we should hold off until next Friday to establish other than our monthly, but our next meeting date?
So there's no meeting on the 5th?
No.
Okay, all right, I was kind of banking on.
And what about the 28th?
The 28th, we only set aside in case tonight we felt like we had to come together again before the 1st. So that's up to us tonight as to whether we meet the 28th or not.
I think if we have a couple, since tomorrow is a posted meeting, I think we have a little bit of afterthought from today, we can probably talk tomorrow, since again, it is a posted meeting and talk.
Yeah, although I will.
I don't think your committee will have objection to that.
No, but our committee, unfortunately, after we're done with the council, has to meet and take care of some end-of-year budget transfers, which is a normal course of business at this time of the year, and it's our last time meeting ever, so.
Can we go back to the issue of the building inspector's retirement? So on July 1, we'll need one, and I know that the position was posted, yes?
Supposedly resumes were sent, and I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what the closing day was, Kathy, but.
I worked on that a little bit already, too.
Okay.
We should be able to get support from Long Meadow Ham.
That was my question. Could we lean on neighboring committees if.
Long Meadow should be willing to help us, but if they're not willing to help us, like if we're not gonna hire somebody for six months, they're not willing to do that.
Just until we get.
They are willing to help as, as needed type of thing. We might talk to the other two towns.
I've already, yeah.
And they're willing to help as well, so we're having a handler, also willing to help.
I think, I think that could be part of our next agenda, maybe to define some specific areas that each of us can work on.
Right.
We could talk a little bit about strengths and weaknesses and what we can do best to contribute as a team here. And I'm just reaching out a little bit, you know, when we get into, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get off subject here, but when we get into any other topics, I have a couple other pieces I can add to that as well.
The only thing I would, I would add to what you just said is we have to be very, very cognizant and careful of what the charter says. And under the charter, it's the town manager who recruits and hires someone like a building inspector.
Right.
It's not the council. So my opinion, we need to be very careful to act within the authority of the charter only, not anything beyond that. Does that mean sometimes some things might get delayed? Unfortunately, yes, it does, because we're gonna hit some bumps in the road, we're just getting started.
We'll have to decide how long we can bridge that gap, you know, because we're saying reasonably, we probably won't have a town manager on board, well, interim can.
An interim can, that can be one of the directors from the council.
All right, well, then that takes. We'll see how that unfolds, then.
Right.
If we have a town employee that's acting, he can still bring that to the council to hire.
But one of the things that you might wanna consider is the charter also calls for the development of the Office of Community Development, okay? You have an opening of the building inspector, this might be the opportune time to find a building commissioner slash director of the community development.
Well, then we have.
It's changing the job description.
Then you gotta revisit what the posting was, because it's already been posted, so that's something we're gonna have to tackle.
Yeah.
I mean.
Right.
That's an issue that we're gonna have to address at some point in the near future if we're not gonna hire off the applicant pool that was, where the job was already posted.
I agree, but I think the point I'm making is that we don't have the authority to hire.
But the interim, their acting does with our blessing.
That's right, that's right. So we have to make sure we work within those parameters, that's all.
We'll help find the right candidate and point them at whoever our interim manager is, I would hope. That's a, that's a critical position with me, the building inspector. In my opinion, over the last 20 years, there's been zero code enforcement. And it's not just knowing the regulations and doing the job, but code enforcement's a big part of it.
I don't disagree with anything that you said, but I think if we're gonna make it a directive of an acting town manager, then that's the type of directive we give them, but we don't get involved. That's their job essentially to do that, not ours. If, they have to bring the candidate forward if we don't agree that it's the right candidate for the job.
Well, we're gonna find the right person, so they're gonna understand that that's an important part of that job that's been neglected.
And I also, I also think, and I don't know if it'll change under the council, I doubt it, under whatever Robert's rules, but I understand what you're saying about the code enforcement, but if you're casting that at a particular person, I don't think you can, you can discuss a particular person's business conduct without them being here and in an executive session as opposed to where we are now, so, just for future reference.
Good point, thank you. Wow, I'm like amazed, we actually went through that agenda in much shorter time.
You're not quite Denver, but you didn't do bad.
So there's Russ Denver, who was the previous chair of the Appropriations Committee. A lot of you know Russ. He used to have this rule when he came in as chairman of the Appropriations Committee, was it 8:30?
I think it was hour and a half, wasn't it?
No later than 8 o'clock or 8:30 or something. He wouldn't let his meetings go beyond that. So it became what's known as the Denver Rule. We throw that around all the time. We stuck within the Denver Rule, so it's kinda stuck to him, so.
We had a former chairman who was.
Yeah, we just.
What?
It was breakfast.
It was breakfast.
At the half and by end.
The following day.
I'm glad you said.
When the July 1st meeting is at noon.
After the.
Where are we meeting?
That's, that was my next question. Are we meeting here?
I'll try to book the room for here, July 1st, here.
Okay.
What time?
12 o'clock.
And I think Mike had, under, Mike had something to go over under agenda number four.
Will you take care of the logistics in terms of inviting the department heads? Making sure the media is aware and hopefully in attendance to catch the swearing-in and that sort of stuff? Everyone agrees that would be a good, good way to kick it off?
And also, just a note, for those of you, obviously, you're all in the town council now, at noon on the 30th, there's a little thing at the selectmen's office for our outgoing building inspector retirement party.
The 30th where?
At the selectmen's office.
Okay.
Or is it the 28th?
It's the 28th.
Oh, 28th, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What time?
We could go on the 30th.
Something's going on on the 30th. Oh, I know what it is, nevermind. 28th, I'm sorry.
You have things under oath?
Yes. The Lions Club presently has two applications that we're sitting with Amy this afternoon.
We're meeting.
Pardon?
Mike, we're meeting on that Friday.
Okay.
To approve the permit.
Just because I know there are no scheduled selectmen meetings?
Because now we're technically still the Board of Health, so we're gonna meet Friday.
We are?
Yes. She sent you an email.
What time?
3 o'clock. Just for permits.
All right.
Just for two permits for the Lions.
That's it, as long as it's being addressed.
I have a conflict, that's why I'm wondering.
So during the transition, those committees that are in place or boards that are in place for a specific purpose remain there until such time as they're replaced by the appointments of the permanent town manager and things like that. The Board of Health is one of those boards. The current Board of Health, which is of course the Board of Selectmen, will remain in that role until such time as they're replaced by the town manager after we hire a town manager and they find the candidates that they wish for the Board of Health. So that's how they're able to meet and continue on.
Oh, I didn't have a problem with how they're meeting.
Oh, okay.
The girls are worrying that there is no scheduled meeting, and those two permits need to be signed by the.
It was posted this afternoon.
Yeah, okay.
The meeting.
Okay, so I went in there to work on that a little bit, and the Lions Club actually needed to submit more information to finish the application process so that Amy could finalize the application so it can go to the Board of Selectmen to sign the permits. So I guess that's, it's worked its way through today, so, as long as you guys are aware of it, so.
I guess Paul didn't know, but.
So that July 1st meeting, just to recap real quick, the first thing will be swearing-in, swear everybody in. And if, if you wanna bring your family or spouses, I mean, Department, I think it's good time to make it ceremonial and everything. Then I'll pass out the open meeting law and the ethics sheet that you have to sign. You go home and read it if you want, or you can sign it right away if you already know what it is. We'll do that, and then as far as an agenda, you know, I'll start putting agenda together, and you guys just let me know. Guys, I know there's a couple topics that are definitely gonna be on there. So we'll just build an agenda throughout, further in the week and finalize it, and we should be good to go.
So just a quick point of clarification, we have a town email that's been issued, so should I from now forward only use that for correspondence? And then once July 1st comes, there is no more email strings or anything like that? We have to.
You can't, you can't have an email string, but you can't respond.
Okay.
Like, information can be given out, like if Kevin wanted to send me something about some topic that we were gonna, you know, or like the meetings and whatnot, he can send it, but I can't. I learned this when I first, when Nick scolded me when I first got into office.